This is what I got for next week.
Good evening, everybody. It's five thirty P M. I'd like to call our special city council meeting dated July twenty seventh, twenty twenty three to order. Uh, we are located in council chambers, current city hall. Obviously, we will proceed to the pledge of allegiance and our eminence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, interredible, public, which expands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, under government, one, indivisible.
Let us go to the Lord. Our most gracious heavenly Father, we ask that you be with everyone here tonight. We ask that you have your hand upon the shoulder for all councilmen. Here this evening, that the decisions made will be for the best interests of our town as well as for the citizens of Kermit. We ask that you bless each and every one here, that the health may prosper them and that good things will happen for all involved. We ask these things in your most blessed name. Amen.
Thank you, sir. So the next item on the agenda is to approve the minutes of the previous meetings.
From F Y I, the special meeting on June twenty ninth, they're not included. They will be included in our meeting for all of the participants.
All the same, thank you.
Hey Diana, I had, uh, these are just little typos. On the third day, June twenty second, second page. You changed my name.
I did.
Yeah, one, two, fourth col- fourth paragraph.
Okay.
And then right at the top has Hope's name.
Okay, what, what agenda item is that?
Uh, those were present.
Oh. Okay, it's Hope and Cassie. Uh huh. What agenda item was it for me?
For me, on seven. And then I'm Korea, and then I went to Korea on fourteen, on the, on the third page, item fourteen.
Korea? Yeah, fix it. Oh my gosh.
That's okay. I've been called worse.
You had a lot to pick.
You don't wanna go back Corina?
No, I'm gonna go Korea. But that's the only thing I saw, and if everyone has had time, accept the minutes, approve the minutes.
I'll make a second, a second, the motion to accept the minutes.
So we have a motion and a second to accept the minutes with the spelling changes made. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, council, next item is number five is our consent agenda items. Uh, those are all in your packet. You can review those and pull anything else you'd like or approve that as one motion.
On, um, page six, um, item number zero, one, seven, eight, nine, it was repair engine blocks. Is that in the truck with the engine?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the one truck, that's a semi truck, the trash truck.
The trash truck, okay. And then the very bottom item on that, um, page, it said utility billing. Two thousand six hundred forty one eighty seven.
So you do it. The question says a data pros?
Okay, okay. Da- data pros, yes.
Yeah, that's our third party that mails out our bills.
Oh, 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 okay, okay. Alrighty, okay. And we, we had to purchase a new casket lowering device for the cemetery.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Tell you what was wrong with the old one.
The hydraulic se- the lowering device at the cemetery?
Yes, yes, the lowering device, yeah, it was a hydro, yeah. Uh, well, it was a, it was a brake, it was a brake.
It wouldn't lock.
It wasn't locking up, so what it was doing, it was, yeah, it was a safety, yeah, it was just dropped, yeah.
It just dropped. Yep, it's happened before.
And then the one you were saying about the center blocks, right? That's the one, the repair of the center blocks, right?
Aye. Let's see, um.
That's on page four.
Yeah, repairs center blocks, David Baldwin.
Okay, that was a wall that was, uh, that got knocked down.
Okay.
It was a, it was a residence wall from our trash trucks.
Oh.
We pushed the dumpster too close to it and knocked that wall down.
Oh, yeah. So that was repair of, of vents?
Yes, yes, it was a repair, yes, sir.
Okay.
Oops.
Okay, and, and I had something on page five, and I think we spoke of this last week, on our s- hauling the sewer water, are we in compliance with the T C Q and how did this, how we're disposing that?
The way, the way we're taking it, we're putting it into one of our other manholes down the road.
Okay.
Yeah, that was, that's where we're pushing it down to. It's still going back into our sewer line, so those things.
Is that that still that deal from over on Van Street?
Yeah, that was around the Van Street, yes. Where we're hauling all that water, so that water coming out from the ground onto, onto the road. We went ahead and sucked it down with the, with the trucks and sent it back to another manhole. Those are sort of the ones that we're fixing.
And the trucking is certified to do that?
Yeah, yeah, they have, they have factors.
Okay.
Yeah.
But we have that fixed now, we're not?
Yes, we're fixed, we're good.
So we shouldn't have that bill coming in anymore?
Yeah, no more. We're done with that, yeah.
Okay.
That has cost us fortune over the last few months. What other questions I have? And did they replace that over on Van Street? That was pla- replaced with, with PVC, wasn't it? Or was it, did we go back in with clay?
Yeah, part of that, yeah, part of that's right, yeah. We took out the.
Clay pipe that was there?
Yes, yes, sir.
Cause it had here replacing the clay pipe, that's what make sure what we've gone back in with.
Yes.
And that's finished?
Yes, sir.
I have a question more on B.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, on the, this Ameri-Temp where we're getting all of the electrical service lines and stuff, um, we were told before we couldn't use the hotel market money, and now we can.
That's absolutely bringing folks in for putting his in beds.
Oh, okay.
Cool.
I just wanna make sure that we weren't, you know.
I'll make the motion, we approve A, B, and C.
A second.
Consent items.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent items, A, B, and C is listed on the agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do we have any presentations by citizens or comments of public interest? I don't know if Chris has made any. Anybody else in the public who wants to speak? Right, we will move on to new business. Uh, first things discussed and possibly act on different ways to improve attendance to city council meetings. That is, uh, what Chris had asked to be, to speak on, but since it is a agenda item, I will speak on the fact that just continue to share Facebook postings with the meeting notices, with the, uh, YouTube logins and things of that nature and encourage people to come and participate. It's, uh, seems like the same old faces, but they're good, good old faces most of the time, so we'll, we'll take those, but if you've got a friend, tag them along, bring them with you. All the, all the input helps. Does anybody else have anything on item A? Okay, so moving along, number B is discuss preliminary budget for the year twenty twenty three dash twenty twenty four. Okay, you wanna kick us off?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Council. Good evening, um, and thank you all to all the folks in the public that elected to attend. The purpose of tonight's agenda item, uh, is to really have kind of the, the one and only, um, sort of budget workshop that will, will be able to have, we'll, we'll be able to have certainly a lot more discussions about the budget, um, not asking for any action to be taken tonight. Uh, and most of my presentation, uh, this evening is going to be focused on our revenue, uh, and then also our personnel. Um, we'll get into a couple of other things as we go through, but that's, that's, uh, what I wanted to spend the most time on. And it probably, uh, those are the two items that will require, um, the biggest decisions from council on. So, uh, we wanted to get those out there as, as quickly as we could. So I provided a lot of additional paperwork, uh, to your packets. If you'll turn your attention to the City of Kermit memorandum, uh, first, and I'll kind of walk you through that, and then we'll refer to some of the other documents as we get to it. So, the first section is revenue history and, uh, expected revenue. And although my name's at the top of this and it's to the mayor and council, uh, none of these documents here would have at all been possible without the assistance of every single staff person that's in this room, uh, and a lot of efforts, uh, that went into it. So I absolutely want to recognize, uh, Rita, Diana, uh, Tony and Tony, uh, on the P D side, uh, chief, the other department directors and assistant directors for their assistance, because we, we would not be here, I certainly would not be here and be able to talk with you about all of this without the tremendous work, uh, by all of them. So, uh, we'll start with revenue. We primarily get, uh, the bulk of our revenue from water, sewer, and sanitation related fees. What you see graphically there is, uh, a, a report of our total revenues for the past four years. You see, uh, fiscal year ends twenty nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two. Uh, from twenty until twenty-two, they've been very, very flat with, um, you know, less than really a hundred thousand dollars in variation between those three years. The orange bar is where we are year to fiscal year to date, uh, twenty twenty-three. And, uh, using our exceptionally equipped crystal ball, we're, uh, predicting coming in about four point four, four point five million, uh, toward the end of the year. Looking at all of these numbers, my general philosophy when it comes to, to budgets of any kind, on the income side, I try to be super, super conservative. And on the expense side, I try to be pretty aggressive. Um, that just makes fiscal conservative sense overall to me. So that's what I try to do. Um, Rita and I haggled a little bit, but we kind of settled on coming up with, uh, a preliminary budget for our, uh, combined fee revenue here of about four point four million for twenty-three, twenty-four. So that's kind of the, the number that we're going off of. That is also, of course, based on our current rates. So if, uh, anyone is not familiar, the Texas Municipal League surveys all cities across the state every year, uh, on a whole host of things. One of which is how much you charge for water, how much you charge for wastewater, uh, among other things. And, uh, just from my own experience of, of being here for a little bit of time and, and seeing some of the rates, I was like, man, those look awfully low. And so I checked, uh, and in fact, they are very, very low. Uh, even though the city of Kermit has increased water rates in the past few years, they are still comparatively very, very low. The data are in front of you. So, um, using the municipalities of Seminole, Hitchcock, Monahams, Decatur, Marble Falls, Nor- Northlake, Crockett, Carthage, Sealy, and Woolford. Well, why those? Oh, they have populations of very, very similar to the city of Kermit's. Uh, some of those are geographically close, some of them are not. Their average for a charge, uh, on the first five thousand gallons that they sell is forty-two dollars and fifty-seven cents. Uh, ours, it depends on, uh, water, uh, the, the size of your meter, and that ranges from twenty-nine dollars, twenty-five cents to thirty-one dollars, twenty-five cents. So it's very, very low. Um, that's great. It's fantastic to extend low costs for our main infrastructure to our citizens, to our business owners, uh, and other folks that do business in the city. But infrastructure costs a lot of money. And, uh, we are not charging an equitable or comparable rate, uh, in order to try and maintain that system. So that is something, uh, for consideration. As a city manager, my recommendation would be to increase that rate to a somewhat more, uh, comparable, uh, amount for other cities. And that is the city's main source of overall revenue. Sewer rates are also comparatively low when compared to those cities. Uh, we charge seventy dollars and forty-two cents for up to ten thousand gallons of water used. The, uh, average comparable to our other municipalities is forty-one dollars and thirty-four cents. Any questions?
I have one, um, okay like, okay like the lodge building here. We use sometimes less than a hundred gallons of water a month, cause we only need once a month. And with what we're paying right now, which is one thirteen a month, I mean, we can't, that lodge can't afford a two hundred dollar a month water bill.
Certainly.
So something like that, we might have to kind of break down and look over, you know, organizations that have a building like that that use, I mean, very little water. I mean, sometimes we don't even use a hundred gallons a month, and then sometimes we might use a little bit over that. You know, we might have to do some fluctuating there.
Absolutely, and it's a good point, uh, Councilman Hayes, that, you know, charging for water is a overall, it can be an extraordinarily complex process. So one can have a minimum water bill based upon a very minimal amount of usage, say, less than five thousand gallons. And I, I didn't get into the complexities of what happens as water usage significantly goes up. But, um, absolutely, there would be ways to still extend low-cost services to those who use the infrastructure much less while passing on some of that expense to those who use the infrastructure considerably more. That absolutely can be done.
Okay.
That would be the idea.
Yeah, cause the nonprofit churches and stuff would not be using that amount of water.
Not unless they have a big line, you know, or something, but maybe like that, we don't have any water, and I mean, it's, it's, you know, we.
Right. Right. Well, they keep having the big lines, well.
Yeah, I mean, we, our average income's a little over five, six thousand a year, so you can't afford a three or four hundred dollar a month water bill, you know.
Yeah.
You know, in that instance, and like I said, like some of the churches and stuff like that, you know, that use minimal water, have what, minimal water usage. Cause I know we, we, I, I went out and checked with me to one time and we had used, like, it was, it was right at a hundred gallons from a.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So our minimum right now is based off of five thousand gallons, so we could possibly look at.
Correct. Until such time as, uh, a user, a residential user in particular, and I, y'all correct me if I'm wrong, cause I have less familiarity than you do, but until such time as you use five thousand gallons, you're paying the minimum rate no matter what, uh, and that's it, and then it goes up from there. On commercial, does anybody know right off the top of their head? If that changes, I'd, I'd have to look it, look it up for sure. But even there, again, the, the more, it's, it's kind of like so many other things. The more you use, the more you ought to pay.
Sure, sure.
I mean, that, that makes sense.
Yes.
Um, but, but absolutely, uh, remain conservative for those who, who don't utilize, uh, a lot of service, a hundred percent. All right, if no other questions, uh, we did front, front and back on this, so if we go to page two. Then our next, uh, most significant source of income for the city is our sales tax. Uh, this graph is a lot more variable. Uh, however, I did go ahead and plot a trend line, um, back since twenty fifteen, which does have a positive slope. It was overall increasing. Uh, in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, major, major boom times for this area, we had huge, huge, uh, sales tax revenues. Then it fell off, and now it's started to recover and perhaps, you know, flatten out a little bit. Uh, in twenty twenty-three, that one point eight, uh, one point nine million that you see there bolded and italicized, that is a, uh, projected value. The good news from a budgetary standpoint for this fiscal year is the sales tax that we have received up to this point were about a hundred and twelve thousand over what was budgeted. So, again, very positive, uh, with regard, with regard to those numbers. We are, again, uh, using our Willa Crisp crystal ball, uh, predicting about one point six million for sales tax revenue, uh, next fiscal year. Again, on estimating revenue coming in, that's where I prefer to be pretty conservative, more aggressive on estimating expenses. So, um, Rita tells me that she's pretty confident we're gonna come in higher than that. I'd certainly love for that to happen, but that's what we're kind of looking at right now. Any questions on sales tax? All right, ad valorem, uh, taxes, right beneath that, that's our property taxes. So, uh, I had a, a conversation at Rotary, um, earlier this week where some folks were, were very surprised. Uh, but if you'll notice, the twenty twenty-two net taxable value for all the property that is within Kermit that we can receive, uh, property tax revenue from was valued at two hundred and thirty-two million. It's now two hundred and twenty-eight million, so a reduction of about four million dollars. Um, that indicates that the appraisal district has reduced overall property values for the city during that time period. Um, that results in, if you, if you take that, if you subtract those two big numbers, two hundred and thirty-two million, two hundred and twenty-eight million, and you look at percent change, that's a one point six seven percent reduction in our, uh, taxable value from last year to, to this year. Uh, that will ultimately result in about thirteen thousand dollars less in the property tax revenue that we will bring in if we make absolutely no change whatsoever to the tax rate, uh, to the property tax rate. Is thirteen thousand dollars of a loss a big deal? It's not, when you look at it just by itself. Uh, but before the council will be three ultimate decisions. And again, tonight is not an action-taking night. I know this is a certainly uh, very important and significant topic area, but you basically have, uh, I suppose you have a fourth choice as well. You could lower taxes, um, if you wanted to do that. But you could maintain the tax rate. If you maintain the tax rate, then, uh, our income from property taxes will be about thirteen thousand dollars less. Uh, we're predicting to bring in around eight hundred or so thousand if taxes are maintained exactly as they are, uh, for the next year. You could, uh, choose to slightly, and, and this would be very so slight, because all you're making up is thirteen thousand dollars. But you could increase the tax rate to make up for that teeny tiny little bit shortfall. Uh, that is completely within, uh, the realm of possibility. Um, then you could consider a minor to a significant increase in property tax rates based upon what's called the de minimis rule. We, in the city of Kermit, qualify for the de minimis rule because we are municipality with a population of less than thirty thousand. What this means is that in general, you know, property values are expected to increase. So we're expected just because of the rising value in property taxes to bring in more money year to year. Well, that's not happening, uh, in, in this particular year, but that is what is expected. Um, in any case, the de minimis rule still applies. And you could raise taxes in any amount such that the city could generate an additional up to half a million dollars in revenue from property tax. Um, if you went all the way up to a increase of a half a million dollars, that, when we, when we bring in eight hundred thousand at the current rate, that would be a significant increase. But that entire range would be open, uh, for consideration as an option. So, um, I don't have a recommendation yet that I, uh, am ready to put forward tonight in terms of which of those three options to consider. That is largely based upon, um, two projects that I'm gonna tell you about here in just a little bit, where we may be able to work on some very significant, large infrastructure projects without significant capital outlaying. Um, if we're able to do that, then we may be able to make do more with what we have. But again, something to consider, today I'm presenting all the facts, and what will be on your table for consideration moving forward. Any questions about ad valorem or property taxes? All right, page three. Uh, at the top of this page, you've got a graph that shows our total revenue. So what this does is this combines our, uh, water, sewer, um, wastewater, water, sewer and sanitation revenue, our sales tax revenue, our property tax revenue, and then everything else that contributes to it. So what's everything else? Those are our franchise fees, permit fees, citations, what little bit we get from those, uh, and other money that comes into the city, but it's a relatively, you know, overall, uh, small amount. So you kind of see fluctuations there that, um, sort of, you know, add all the other graphs together. Uh, you can see where we are, uh, total year to date in twenty twenty-three, we're at six point two million. We're thinking that we're going to come in at about seven point four million, uh, by the end of the year, which would be, of course, fantastic. Um, again, being conservative, uh, kind of looking at the sum of those three things that we looked before, I'm putting out there around six point six million, uh, to consider for our total revenue as we, as we move forward, uh, for next year. That, of course, may change, but that's kind of what I'm looking at right now. Any questions at all about overall revenue income?
Yes, sir.
And actually, Mayor and Council, this would be a good place to pause if we do want to go back, uh, to the other agenda item, and since Mr. Isbell just arrived, or we can continue with this.
How many, how many more minutes do we have before year end? Uh, do we end?
Year end, fiscal year end, we're at one September thirtieth. So we are in quarter four of our fiscal year right now.
So we mean, we, at the end of September? Okay. So Sep- the end of September first of October is?
September thirtieth is the last day of this fiscal year. Yes, sir. October first is when the new budget would take place.
I just want, I want to clarify, I thought that's what it was, but I wanted, I couldn't remember September or October.
Yes, sir.
Does anybody in the public have any comments about what Mike has discussed so far, and then we can, we can ask Mr. Chris if he'd like to speak, and then we can carry on.
Only question I have, Mr. Mayor, on the, um, if, if they, uh, decide to go ahead and increase the tax rate, I'm not familiar with you, uh, the whole de minimis rules, but would it go for the voters?
No, ma'am. Um, the, the de minimis rule is specifically designed for municipalities. No, ma'am. Um, the, the de minimis rule is specifically designed for municipalities smaller than thirty thousand because of really just not being able to keep up with revenue growth. And that is, there, there's a lot of calculations that go into calculating exactly what that de minimis rate is. Quite literally, the worksheet is ten pages long when you print it all out to figure out exactly what that is. And I don't have it calculated yet. We actually don't have all of the data from the appraisal district to calculate what that rate would be. Um, but there's thresholds, and as long as the council doesn't exceed what those thresholds are, then it does not trigger, um, automatic election.
Okay.
There is a threshold that can trigger, um, a, uh, what's the word? Is it stating me? But it, it would, the citizens would have to call for an election. Uh, it's not an automatic one, but the citizens would have to call for it, uh, and there's a threshold for that to be reached as well.
Okay.
But that will be unbelievably transparent at all what the council goes through. One of my responsibilities, I have to publish our de minimis rate on the city's website and get it out there for, for all to see. So it would be very, very public. Um, all the options up for consideration.
Okay. That's the only question I have. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I do have a question also. Um, these other numbers that we're looking at, twenty twenty seems pretty consistent or lower. What made it a million dollars more in this graph?
For total revenues?
Yes.
For revenues?
In twenty and twenty-one?
Yeah, these, see, it's.
We had a little bit of a boom going on.
Right, but these numbers are, it, twenty's, twen- twenty twenty's consistent with the other years here, and it's lower here, significantly lower. So how did we end up ahead on this?
You're saying twenty twenty, so twenty twenty in, with, uh, combined sewer sanitation and so forth was four and a half million. Then in twenty twenty, there was one point, okay, so see that's, there was one point six million in sales tax.
Right.
So you got one point six plus four point five. Gets you to one point six and four and a half is, uh, a little over six million. And then you're wanting to know what that extra two point two million is?
Yes.
From twenty twenty? Any idea what that is, uh, up here?
Twenty, six twenty-one, that was, we were really booming right about then. So the sales tax was, was incredible at that time.
Well, we show them here, sales tax revenue, one point six million, so it's actually down.
But it's actually down in twenty twenty. Oh.
It was not, that's, that was COVID.
Yeah, twenty nineteen it was.
Yeah, yeah, our sales tax was down.
COVID, yes.
Yeah, that was, COVID was.
Is that extra revenue that was dumped in the general fund from like, uh, ARP or anything like that?
It's not, um, no extra revenue for it's all that went to projects and not necessarily.
Okay.
But, yeah.
Well, we'll send Rita to go investigate what the difference is, uh, when we.
We work quite a bit higher on.
We'll get you an answer.
Total revenues were two million dollars higher.
That didn't have anything to do with the COVID money we got, that we could, could use anything with it?
Yeah, it could have, it, it wasn't. It was revenue in the general fund, yes it was. We didn't do a separate fund for COVID.
And when did pilot join? When did they come in?
Pilots accounted for in the sales tax revenue issue. So she'll, she'll confirm here in just a little bit, but that was my suspicion as well in twenty twenty with the enhanced, that's what I meant by ARP, but the COVID might coming in.
Coming in.
That would have been dumped into the general fund, and the general fund is, is calculated, is accounted for in the total revenues.
Okay.
Above and beyond the sales tax, ad valorem, uh, and the, uh, fees from sanitation sewer.
Okay.
Cause that was about one point three million.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I couldn't remember how much we got, but I knew we got a pretty.
We did get a, a significant amount, yeah. Much more generous in San Diego, P D. This time, yeah.
Mr. Chris, would you like to go ahead and take your spot, uh, and speak to the? Uh, traffic's tough, sir.
Yes, sir, there's a.
Twenty twenty, right?
Is pile up on eighteen. Uh, the idea is on getting more people in this room. I actually had a great idea that I'm going to take from you, the previous city manager and the chief, where you did a Facebook post. And where each council member would effectively invite his constituents or voters to come in here and be here. That way that we can get more of a public opinion in this room. Uh, I've talked to about two dozen people and a lot of people are stuck on the mantra of the previous council to where the previous council, some members were pretty egregious in the fact they didn't want anybody here. So, uh, we just gotta kind of break that culture and start a new culture of saying everybody's welcome through the doors.
I agree. We, in, in your delay, we did talk about continuing the Facebook sharing and, and just encourage and bring a friend, encouraging the ones that are here to, to keep coming, obviously. So yeah, maybe a, a once a week, once a week, a different council member can do a s- a small little Facebook post with Mike's help and, and invite.
The idea I actually had was to begin with, get the six of you in one post on the city page saying, hey, we're your local government and we want you to come to city council, be part of your government.
Okay.
And, uh, it's a great idea, you know, afterwards, get each district to put a post out, or they all can do a post, just get more people here.
Sounds great.
But the biggest problem, like I, like I was saying, is there was a culture cultivated where people who came in here felt that, uh, PD would be weaponized against them, or the water department, their water rates would automatically magically go up. And I explained to them that no, PD is not a weapon. Water rates are the same for everybody. It doesn't change. There's no special favors. There's no, I don't like this guy, double his rates. So we need to bring back the hometown feeling here and make people feel like they're welcome. What are your thoughts, Craig?
I, can we respond to? I don't know, are we supposed to interact?
Yeah, it was on the agenda. It was on the agenda, so we could.
So it, it was worried and possibly take action, so.
Okay. No, I agree. I think we already discussed it. I mean, we have no newspaper, we have no radio stations at this time, so in a small town, you know, word of mouth goes a long ways.
Well, and then, you know, we have people who are here in this room who have a lot of followers. Kelsey's got a lot, Hope has a lot, Cheryl has a lot. If we all can get on there, share the posts that y'all put out and put people in here, and maybe they'll get a greater understanding of what's going on, and we won't have the, the crazy threats on ATVs on the Fourth of July because they understood what happened in this chamber because they weren't there, so.
Well, and I found, because I post a lot on Facebook.
Yes, you do.
And I, um, share whatever I can, you know. But there are those people out there that just rude comments, rude comments, and, you know, that keeps me from wanting to do more because I don't want to have to deal with that.
Well, you're right, but we have to cultivate a culture that positive arguments, a rational mind can come through this door and stand right here and say what they need to say to you without being rude, you know, uncouth. And they can get a greater understanding of what you do and what happens here.
I do also think, and I keep pointing at Mike, and Mike's gonna have to help, but we have those classes. I do think we have to be careful on the quorum. If we're on certain, there's certain restrictions on Facebook as a group, I think. So we need to look into that to make sure that we're not violating any Open Meetings Act or anything.
Yeah, it, like in terms of making a post, um, to welcome people in, I, I think we're, we'll be okay in terms of not conducting city business, but, but encouraging folks to come in. But, uh, a good, the mayor makes a good point. If a, if a post is made on a social media platform and you all start chiming in, then that is an issue. Uh, there, there is, um, the possibility and independent of, of your thoughts about a city in central Texas that may or may not be our state capital, uh, that city utilizes the online message board.
Right.
For the council, and that is a lawful way that does not violate the Open Meetings Act to have a continuous discussion, uh, at all times. So that, that's possible, that's something to consider, um.
Well, they did that in Austin. That was at the T M L conference last year, uh, that we went to, and see, they got in trouble because they were, they had too many sharing comments and all on the deal, and somehow or another got in trouble about the Open Meetings Act. They, they actually had a quorum chatting and you, you can't do it, so they developed that, that, that message board.
Yep.
So they wouldn't get in trouble.
Yep.
That was the, the, the whole beginning of that is because they were called down on some stuff. There were too many chiming in and commenting on certain things, and it was considered a quorum. So, but with this way, it's legal for them to discuss it and, and not get in any trouble. They said you had to really, they were emphasizing how fearful you got to be on, sharing on Facebook.
Well, it would be similar to a video that we paid to post on YouTube. It'd say, hi, I'm the mayor, David Holbrook. Hi, I'm Karina Chavez. We're Kelsey Short, Rodney Hayes, Fern, Evan Judy. We want to welcome you to come out on X date on the next council meeting, council meeting. That way.
Yeah, I think we can do that, and, and the message board would be a good way not to get drug into a pu- a potential conflict.
Right, cause I was attacked because I posted that I was gonna pick up people's trash for free on our cleanup day.
Yes, I remember that.
And, uh, because I was told everybody that they had to, I'll supply the trailer, but they had to load, load their own stuff.
Correct.
And I was literally attacked.
Unfortunately, we're gonna have people who are ignorant.
You know, and so that's what I worry about because I'm just trying to do what's good for our town.
Yes. Um, I believe.
How we all are.
Yes. I believe you are, and I believe, and I have a strong belief that the more citizens we have in this room, the greater the public knowledge is gonna be on the decisions that have to be made. You know, people talk about the trash trucks. Oh, they just spent five hundred thousand dollars. The, the numbers have been up there. They didn't understand that you actually had to have the trucks. They see Republic in part of the town, and they're like, well, why are we buying trash trucks? Republic is here. I'm like, well, because Republic only does part of it. If you had been in the council meeting, you would have seen the whole, whole ordeal. So the more we can educate the public, the better off this city will be.
Yeah, it's three and a half million dollars a year for Republic to pick up our trash. That's the reason.
See, the people who are saying, well, why are we spending all this money, weren't here for that, and they don't go to YouTube and look at the previous videos.
I, I also want to let everybody at home know it's not a hundred and five degrees in here. I know people who have come and people are like, I'll have heat stroke if I go do that every week or month or whatever, so.
Good news is the heat in here is gonna be solved. We, that is, that's gonna be taken care of, so that's no longer gonna be.
So I think that'll encourage people maybe to come out too.
Oh, that's true.
You know, it, from a citizen's point, it's heartbreaking to walk in and see empty aisles, you know, hey, there's not many people here. And then you, you leave here and next week they're complaining, well, the city's doing this. I'm like, come on, guy, come out. Well, I don't feel comfortable with that.
We don't get a good turnout unless there's a conflict going on.
And we have flipped.
But how do they get that news?
Bad news always travels fast.
Well, we need to see how the bad news travels so we can do the good news that way.
I, I think as a council, we're in agreement, uh, and I, like we expressed earlier, I want to continue what we're doing, if we can add the online message board. Um, like you said, bring back that hometown feeling, and just bring a friend, uh.
There you go.
And, and on a, on a other note, I'd like to apologize for the way I spoke last time. You all know my mother passed. I was in a very emotional roller coaster. And it was crazy. Uh, not talking about that anymore. Just wanted to apologize for the way it came across. I watched it and I was like, man, what is it?
We understand, thank you. But, uh, kind of like vacation Bible school, bring a friend. Let's, let's, everybody, bring a friend.
Now, if we offered something free.
Maybe.
Maybe.
Hey, free knowledge, like, hey.
Free knowledge.
Positive publicity.
And, and anything you guys share from the city page, I will, I will share it. Uh, I'll get my family to share it, my kids to share it. Because like I said, I, I, I believe the city can be one of the greatest cities in, less, in Texas. We have the ability, we have the people, and now we're starting to get, getting the knowledge, the knowledge and powers through new policies and stuff going on. This could be great.
I agree.
I appreciate y'all's time.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Um, Mr. Mayor, uh, something for consideration. We, we are nearing, uh, being able to, uh, open and officially announce an opening to our civic center. An idea that, uh, I might throw out is we could actually combine a council meeting with sort of a grand opening celebration of the civic center. Um, and that might be something, uh, to consider.
That's possible, yeah.
Yeah, and there will be air conditioning?
Yes, it works. It works great. But when, when the T E two came in, we were doing, it was very chilly there.
Do you know what else we could do? Maybe pass out like their website, like just a card with our website, like, um, our city website?
I, I didn't hear that.
Maybe even pass out, have cards for, with our website information?
Maybe possibly put the, the YouTube.
Right.
Put it on the water bill.
Thank y'all for your time.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Joe, do you have something? You're just waving at me? All right. I tell my miss Rita had a, uh, a, uh, explanation maybe?
Yeah, that was the T E two funds at one point four. Like that coronavirus, yeah.
Nobody's got anything else comment-wise? We'll, we'll, uh, let the city manager resume his presentation.
All right. Uh, thank you very much. So we're back to page three now, uh, moving into the section that I titled, uh, Personnel and Team Kermit. So as I, as I spoke, uh, originally, one of my main objectives was to go over with you revenues, uh, and their status as we look forward into the future, and then also consider personnel as that being a, a significant expense. So what we're gonna start with here is some data, and unfortunately, the, the first piece of this is negative data. The, the city of Kermit's absolute most valuable asset is its staff unquestionably. Um, I have been very warmly welcomed here. Uh, there is incredible talent, uh, among our staff and, um, a lot of great ideas, and, uh, we need to harness that. We need to do that. And the staff have, all the public servants everywhere, have a reasonable expectation to have competitive compensation and benefits. When you look at this table that is presented, on the left, you see separation type by year, uh, from twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three. And what that shows you is that the vast majority of the service separations in each of those years are voluntary resignations. Folks just plodding out, quitting and leaving us. When you compare that to the table on the right, you'll see that our hiring efforts are sadly very behind, uh, showing an overall negative churn. So for example, in twenty twenty-one, we hired twenty-three people, but of those twenty-three folks, only nine of them remain active with us today. Fourteen are gone. In twenty twenty-two, we hired twenty-two people, uh, but only nine of them remain. Thirteen have left. And so far this year, we've hired eighteen, uh, but only twelve remain and six have separated, and we're just in July, uh, to about finishing. That is a clear signal that something, uh, among our staff is not able to hold on to, and that's sad. Um, attrition and voluntary reg- resignations are exceptionally expensive to organizations, whether they be public organizations, private organizations, or otherwise. The Gallup, uh, organization has done studies on this. You take an employee and you lose them, it takes generally about thirty percent or so of their salary just to replace them, okay? When you consider if that person is like public safety staff, where there's a long training period, think about like police officers and FTO programs and things like that, then that, that cost goes up. Um, just to mention, anybody who's ever supervised or managed someone, when you are constantly in a state of training, you cannot progress. It is very difficult to move forward in terms. It is very difficult to move forward in terms of a program. So, uh, those, those are the facts, those are the data, uh, that that speak to what has been going on. In addition to that, I've had the time now, uh, to fully review compensation across the city and it is grossly inequitable. There are department directors making tens of thousands of dollars less than, uh, individuals that report to them. There are individuals in very, uh, who have very, very short tenure, um, with little education, little experience, who make more than individuals who have worked for the city for a considerable period of time, uh, and have more knowledge and experience. The the pay is, uh, it's bad, there there is no way to to get around that. When you learn about supervision management and leadership, one of the theories that's in there is something called the equity theory. And what that means is, you as a person see two di- two individuals and you think of it like a numerator and a denominator from math class from a long time ago. And you're comparing if both numerators are equivalent to each other and both denominators are equivalent to each other. So in other words, this person is compensated at this level and they come to the table with this level of experience, tenure with the city, whatever, and are things equal? And they're not. Uh, and when you have issues of inequity, there are two ways to fix them. You either fix the inequity issue or you correct the misperception. And in some cases, folks, I can't correct the misperception because it's real. So the only other option is to try and correct the inequity. Um, so to do that, we're, we're gonna pause for a second from this packet and we're gonna shift to some of the other materials. So one of the first things that you see is this organizational chart. And, uh, there aren't, uh, a tremendous number of changes on this organizational chart as to what currently exists, but I'll kind of point out uh, those that are, so the green area, uh, is is the big broad org chart, starting with the citizens, mayor and council, and then your, uh, executive staff of the appointees, uh, the department directors and the assistant directors. And in here, uh, there, the the changes that are listed are, we have two amazingly talented folks that work right here in the front, that are kind of the face of Kermit, Sylvia and and Jana. Uh, they, I see them every day, they work their tails off, uh, running around, answering the phone, taking care of folks whenever they pay their bills. They provide administrative support to the folks in the back, uh, they just, they do a lot. And, uh, they're currently classified as clerks, um, and they do a whole lot more than clerks. So, um, what, what, one of the, from a structural standpoint, one of the things that I'm proposing is the reclassification uh, of of those two people and their their individual positions to administrative assistants. Uh, you see that, you see one of them listed there under the city secretary and the other position as a clerk or a cashier. Uh, that's, that's the position that's over on the right, uh, and there is a whole lot of just taking money, processing things and so on. Um, but over under Rita's position, the finance director, we need a true administrative assistant, uh, supporting that role. Uh, as you can imagine, every month, you see all the expenditures that come through that the city processes. Um, it takes a lot to process all of our expenses and process all of our income across all the different departments. It takes a lot to build a budget, to build POs, uh, and I I see the level of work that is involved and I see uh, the level of support for Rita and for Diana, and it's just not there. We need a a strong administrative support role in that position, so that's, uh, the the change there. Moving on down to, uh, public works, this is, uh, kind of the, one of the giant, uh, arms of our organization. And, um, the the changes here are, if you look over to the left, you see a public works superintendent position. And we, we currently have a person in that role, Caesar. He is, uh, doing a a fantastic job of looking after all of sanitation, the drivers, uh, as well as streets. Those two divisions of public works used to have and currently do have on the books, a kind of bona fide supervisor. In talking with Tony and talking with Jose, Caesar, and some of the staff, a lot of those folks, you know, you come in, work is discussed, it's assigned, and they go out and they perform that work lots of times in a, in a pair or in a group type setting. So there's a lot of kind of, uh, supervision, management, coordination at the beginning of the day, then there's obviously, you know, tracking of how that's going, but not, not required there on site. We believe that we can actually eliminate a supervisory position, um, and and leave vacant the street supervisor, move Caesar into this public works superintendent role, and with the help of Jose and Tony, uh, also, that we'll be able to supervise adequately those divisions, um, and those people. So that's kind of the the change there, otherwise everything is is pretty much the same. The difference being is we actually now have, or I propose to have, position classifications that are accurate. So you'll notice that in each division, your kind of upper level folks are your equipment operators. These are the folks that are either operating something really heavy, that if it crashes or falls, is gonna hurt real bad or injure somebody. Or if it's used in a way that, uh, uh, is inappropriate, could cause a lot of damage or even require special certifications and training tab, those are our our equipment operators. Then you've got, uh, service operators, so this is kind of a step between a heavy equipment operator that requires a lot of training and more of a laborer worker, uh, in in those positions. Great example of somebody specifically that is in a role like that is Eva in our water department. Um, she's got some specialized training, uh, and are, also to mention about water, is those workers there, they're listed as workers twos, okay? And the reason being is because our water folks, they come to work and the entire time that they're at work, they're out in the elements. It is hard to attract someone, uh, particularly at the level of wage that we are paying, that is going to go out in the elements and do water work all day, every day long, uh, when they can make more in an air-conditioned, climate-controlled environment, doing pretty mundane tasks. Uh, so that's why those folks are classified as, as worker twos, uh, particularly in the water department. Over on the, uh, public safety side with, uh, police, there is not, uh, much of a difference here. There is one, uh, part-time patrol officer that's not reflected in this, uh, in this setup, but, uh, otherwise, all the positions are there. Um, I don't think Tony Garcia knows this quite yet, but I actually have proposed a change to his title to assistant chief of police, uh, instead of captain, captain's a dying rank in law enforcement, uh, and when you, when you have in in a department this size, the number one and the number two, they they are performing the duties of the chief in the chief's absence. It makes sense to, uh, to refer to them as an assistant chief. Um, not a, not a significant change in payer responsibilities, but a more accurate reflection of a title with regard to what those jobs, uh, are. So that's a proposed structure, uh, for for our current positions. Importantly, this is a fully budgeted, uh, chart. So right now, we have, uh, I believe I wrote it in the memo, I believe we have eight current vacancies. Um, yep, that's correct, so that's on the top of page four, we have eight current vacancies. This includes, um, all budgeted positions, minus that, uh, one supervisor spot that I'm proposing to eliminate. So, uh, all the numbers that you're, you're about to see here in just a little bit would be based on a completely fully-staffed city, uh, with every single one of these colored boxes actually having a body, uh, inside of it. Any questions from a structural standpoint?
On the departments, I don't see cemetery department.
So if you, uh, look on orange, furthest one to the right, you'll see parks and cemetery supervisor.
Oh, okay, all right, I'm sorry, I missed it, I'm sorry, I see it now, I see it, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I just overlooked it, okay.
And so that, those are your parks and cemetery posts. Don't worry. These are a little, these are a little crazy to read, uh, even crazier to build.
Okay, got it.
All right, um, next, if you'll consider the, uh, big legal page that is city of current, uh, pay scale and non-exempt positions. The the current, um, pay scale does have some, what I'll call pay bands. Um, they, they have, uh, some raises that are, uh, supposed to occur at certain elements, generally based on a percent increase, uh, whenever the person reaches a certain level of tenure. It's not at all a true step plan, step plan. So what's before you is a, a true step plan. Uh, these started to originate in public safety a long time ago and more and more cities are adopting step-based pay plans because they're very easy to read, they're very easy to follow, and it makes comparisons, uh, between cities' budgeting purposes super simple, uh, because you know exactly, uh, where folks are at. Um, why the ranges? So for example, if you, you go over, uh, to the right and you'll see, like, professional driver, for example, uh, C D L, you'll notice that that band goes from grade five to grade seven. The reason for that is, uh, suppose you get an applicant that has, uh, they have been driving a C D L, uh, they've had a C D L for ten years and, uh, they have a spotless driving record, uh, good recommendations, a good background investigation and so forth. It makes sense to hire that person in at a higher rate of pay than someone who just got their C D L, for example. Um, having pay bands like this provides guidance, but it doesn't box folks in to a, uh, specific, you know, regiment. Uh, and those decisions are typically made, the department director, uh, in consultation with the city manager on where to bring folks in. I recently, uh, authorized changes in the rates of pay for all of our current, uh, C D L drivers to exactly twenty-five dollars per hour. Um, they were at nineteen dollars per hour. The the reasoning behind that, I think, is very clear, uh, based upon our our loss of those folks and the trash situation that we've had. But you'll notice that the twenty-five dollars, uh, an hour for professional drivers, for example, that comes into about grade five, uh, right about the four-year post-probation mark, so it's right there in that band. This, uh, pay scale is also based upon, uh, trying to be competitive with other cities in our region. Uh, I did a lot of consulting with, uh, the city of Monahans, for example, and, um, the, so right away, you know, a criticism of that, well, the city of Monahans is very different than the city of Kermit, that's exactly right, they are. They have an interstate, they have sales tax revenue that is significantly higher than ours. And can we pay exactly the same as what the city of Monahans does for every position? No, we can't, but city of Monahans is twenty miles away and so is a higher wage. So they're a competitor, uh, like it or not, so while we aren't the same, we have to compete. Same thing with everybody that we're competing with in the, in the private sector. So that is the purpose, uh, behind this scale is to get, uh, more competitive with our, with our wages. Any questions about any of this?
So we have a position for grade twelve, but is there anybody in the grade twelve spot?
We, we don't, I left that, uh, open, we have some folks that, uh, make, that they, they are currently compensated at rates, very few, but we do have some folks that are compensated within that range.
Okay.
Um, and, you know, suppose, like, we, we have a, we have a retirement on the table in our fleet maintenance, uh, situation. So, uh, that fleet maintenance supervisor, you know, with that pay band, we can pay that position all the way up to ninety-three thousand, um, even for somebody that's pretty, you know, well-established and so forth, I think that's very competitive, I think we'd be fine. But honestly, to your point, uh, pay band twelve possibly could be deleted? I just got it on there with with room to grow.
Okay.
Actually, used to have a lot more lower down, but, but, uh, they got deleted.
Twelve's, twelve's good.
You have a questions?
This would go, I mean, we, we've, we had this come up at a council meeting couple of years, uh, a couple of years ago, a couple of months ago. There was one that had, the gentleman who worked for the P D for like seven years. Then he has a dispatcher, then he went in and became a uniform officer and all. Well, he was starting then at base pay first, go around and, but he had seven years' experience in the P D, so their seniority would be included, would would be, they would be able to go with their pa- their seniority.
So that's.
On their pay scale?
That's a great point, and I've tried to address that a little bit, uh, in here, uh, better than than what we've currently got. So you'll notice that the, that the dispatch, uh, scale is in pay band four. Um, and and what what we'll get to here in just a second, because I have now gone and and worked a lot with Rita, we spent a lot of time on this, um, of taking all of our current personnel and fitting them in here. Um, not surprisingly, with all the inequities that we have, there are some folks that you can't just go, okay, this person has worked for the city of Kermit for this many years, they're in this pay band, and bop, there they are, and everything lines up beautifully. That, that doesn't work because of the situation that we're currently in. So there, there's a little bit of grandfathering, but we are able to get everybody on this plane, uh, where they can move forward. To answer your point directly, let's suppose that we have a five-year, uh, dispatcher that would be making forty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty-six and a penny, okay? You see that in pay band four, under the five-year mark, okay? And then let's suppose that that person, uh, decides that they wanna be a police officer and they get hired. So there's, if you just go down to the P D scale, right away, they're gonna start at fifty-two thousand if they were to be plugged into that position right there, so they're gonna get a raise because they're going to a different position that's classified different, that has more responsibilities and and training and so forth. So the the bands, the way that the the position classifications, rather, um, address that to, to a much better degree than what we currently have. Now, if we have somebody that has been a dispatcher for twelve or more years and then they decide they wanna be a police officer, um, we would, we'd kind of have to look at that because they would be looking at a reduction.
Reduction, yes.
Uh, but, can't, can't predict everything, so, it's a, it's a step in the right direction. The other thing, counsel, that this does is this lets somebody know, all right, I'm, I'm here as, and knowing that, you know, if the budget gets approved and so on and on, then next year, I'm gonna make this amount of money. What would come before counsel on an annual basis is, would it be necessary to provide a COLA adjustment? A cost of living adjustment, something like that, and then that would be across the board. There would, generally, it would be across the board, uh, and it just makes the whole process of budgeting so much simpler. Uh, because if, if you have something that becomes fairly equitable now and next year, you know, depending on what the economy does and so forth, you're like, well, we need to bump this one and a half percent. That's easy to do, uh, but still keeps everybody in line, their their time, their tenure is valued and so forth. Any other questions on that one? So if you go to the next page, which we're back to regular-sized paper, uh, this is the, um, proposed pay scale for exempt, uh, positions, which includes you all, uh, and, excuse me, the appointees and then all the number ones and the number twos. Excuse me, nothing, nothing here that is, uh, super different with what I would say is the exception of, uh, the director of public works, uh, position. That was one of the major inequities that, uh, we've got, so I've, I've addressed that with a, with a pay band here, uh, that's more equitable. Otherwise, pretty much everything here is, uh, in line with what we've had. Otherwise, pretty much everything here is uh in line with what we've had. From a uh long-term city manager position, what we currently have budgeted is one-twelve or one-seventeen. One-twelve is what's plugged in right now for a, a long-term city manager. Um that may be, that may need to be adjusted depending upon, obviously, the candidates that come through. Uh but that's, that's what we're looking at. That's obviously on the low end of that range, but that's what's currently plugged in. Any questions about that?
I- Go ahead. Um I know we had spoke about the s- attorney, about staff, staffing and attorney. Would we try to budget that in now, or we just?
As, as an employee or?
As an employee?
I have a lot of opinions uh about this. The, the council made a decision to uh contract with a very large, very successful firm in Texas that has offices in Midland. Um I think that the City of Kermit and council has yet to see uh the, the work and the product that that firm may be able to provide, and at the costs that that firm may be able to provide it. My recommendation is to kind of see how that goes, and then uh go from there. You, you've got very, very adequate legal representation right now that is a phone call away. Uh and rather than, you know, budgeting for something that you may or may not need long-term in that way, uh I would, I would recommend that you, you kind of see how that works.
So my question is about the, the council member paid now. Is that a cash payment? Or is that in water? Because we used to get free water.
That is not the water payment. That, that currently accounts for uh what you all receive as a state.
Okay.
We, we gave that back as well, right?
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, but we never did get that much. That's why I was asking.
But you all get, what, six hundred and, six hundred bucks per council, like?
No, no, they get like thirty-five, seventy bucks a month, yeah.
Like twenty.
Yeah. Yeah, about seventy dollars a month.
Okay. You get that much?
No, it's like-
You might be earning pretty water.
Yeah, there's two checks.
It's like twenty dollars, twenty-five, thirty.
Thirty-five, it's like thirty, twenty-four, twenty-seven.
He needs an auditor.
I thought I may have given you all too much of a raise. I'm sorry.
We got a raise?
Now, we're, we're, we're more than happy to take that back down.
Well, what, what we did last year as, as a council was, gave that money back for T, to offset TML costs and things like that, so.
Sorry.
Gotcha.
Currently, council serves for free. It's the pleasure of the citizens.
Yes.
All right. All right, uh next big long page, incentive benefits and supplemental pay. So um what you have before you here is something that is also uh very common across cities, and this does a couple of different things. Uh one, this provides a real incentive for folks to work on and obtain various levels of professional development, whether that be ongoing education, um additional certifications that they need that are absolutely related to their jobs, uh and so on. And there's, there's a ton of things uh down here that are listed that really span uh all across the, the city. And others could be added. Um what, one that's not on here that um we, we really probably should consider adding is bilingual pay. Um I see the benefits of that almost every single day uh here in, in the front uh office. I absolutely know the importance of that out on the street, uh of all of our customer-facing folks that deal with folks uh out, out in the public. So bilingual pay is another thing that we could consider. What uh this really works out to is that any combination hereof could ultimately result in a maximum of payment of four hundred dollars a month for an employee uh if they, they really maxed it out. Um that's, that's not common. Uh what we have done from a budgetary standpoint is we budgeted uh a hundred dollars per employee for every single employee. Some obviously will have a little bit more, some will have less, but that's what we budgeted for, uh to be able to support this, and uh we feel, feel that we can. But this is another way for us to be competitive while also really encouraging the ongoing professional development of uh our staff.
It's a good incentive. Yes.
All right, so if you go back to uh page four. Well, actually, let's go to the bottom of page three, then, then we'll, we'll turn over to more. So uh as you might imagine, again, I, I led with this, the, the city's greatest asset are its people. Um they are also appropriately expensive. The recommendations before you have a cost, uh and it's not a low one. But I, I truly believe in my heart of hearts, in my experience, and based upon the data that I also presented before you, that it is very necessary. Um what will it cost? So if you approve, and remember, every single one of these boxes filled with a person. If you were to approve the personnel uh cost before you, fully burdened budgeted cost for that is five point eight million dollars for the next uh fiscal year. So fairly aggressive estimate. Again, I like to estimate the expenses aggressively, estimate the income more conservatively. If you flip over the page, um that would not include our current eight vacancies. Um it does include the elimination of one public works uh supervisor position. That is also based on a fifteen percent increase across the board in insurance costs. We don't have that number yet, but we have been told that that number is coming and that it actually could be up to eighteen percent. The insurance costs uh provide, the, i- if we remain with TML's benefit pool are extraordinarily high. Uh almost six hundred thousand dollars for insurance costs for the entire city. Um it is my understanding, uh and I learned today, that the city has not shopped for alternative benefit providers. Through my network, I've reached out to uh some other city managers, the network that we have through T2 Professional Consulting, and we have a lot of help coming forward uh for us to actually shop for benefit providers for the city. Uh so we're, we're going to try and, and see if we can't work to reduce those costs. But that's a, that's a big factor, either whether you adopt this or not, insurance costs are going up. And they're gonna be a big portion of either form of, of payment. Um so, so that is a, a huge cost that we're going to try and, and address. Not changing the pay scale at all, um leaving every single person compensated in exactly the way that they are would result in a delta of about eight hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. So that's the cost of what I'm proposing to you, okay? Um of the more competitive wages, the incentive pays, and so on. But when you, when that's a hard pill to swallow, just flip back over to the data of folks churning in and out, and what you're paying for that. And think about the cost of not being able to have a team that's ever able to progress and move forward. Um those are, those are my thoughts on that. Any questions at all about proposed personnel changes, costs, uh compensation, so?
I know we used to do a, a bonus at Christmas. Is it good in there anywhere? I know we didn't last year, but there were some, some other things that had come about or some adjustments.
So at the risk of having the target on my back row even larger, that I am proposing to eliminate. Uh the reason being is because this is a competitive pay scale. Um and longevity pay exists and isn't going anywhere, and also gets paid out in November. In my opinion, public servants and bonuses don't mix. Um and competitive pay scales, incentive-based pays that contribute to their professional development, uh do. That's my opinion. That is council's decision.
Isn't it also illegal to issue bonuses with taxpayer funds?
That is another reason why I don't support.
So council approved that in the past?
Yeah, we did.
You don't even let me in my game room.
Yeah, it's always been that way. So, yeah, it's gonna be a huge-
There's gonna be a supplemental check, but there's no taxes taken out.
I don't remember-
And it's given at Christmas, so.
I don't remember ever voting for that, ever. It just- Well, I knew, I knew that we voted that we didn't want to do it, but. So with this amount here, we still have money for our, all of our equipment and stuff when you think that, and you're not leaving any of that out, are you?
I, I'm not leaving that out, no. So um when you, if you take the five point one uh million for personnel and you look at what our projected or budgeted total revenue of six point six million, you can do the math and see what's left there. That is, that's not a big number. Folks, it's not a big number if you increase it by eight hundred thousand by leaving personnel exactly the way that it is. And again, at the expense of the target, that's why things like our water rates, conservatively, yet appropriately and strategically, need to be looked at. That's why we've, we've got to consider if our revenue streams are comparative, consistent, and able to support an organization. The City of Kermit, like all cities, is above all else an organization. It's not a business. It's not a for-profit business in no way, shape, or form. And, and folks, I'm trying to cut costs every, which way that I can. But you cannot provide quality public service for free. You cannot provide it without charging, when, when expenses go up, and who in here is not increased, has not experienced increased expenses? We all have. So does the City of Kermit. And in order for us to maintain, we have got to increase and consider ways to increase revenue. And specifically to further answer your questions, Councilwoman Williams, there are two uh, two major projects, not really projects, but solutions that are available that allow us to tackle, would allow us to tackle some major infrastructure improvements without capital outlay. Um one of those is through uh a company called Professional Services. They have done phenomenal work uh across many cities in Texas. Uh they've had some conversations with some of the council already. Um but what, what they're, a- and this is actually a section of the government code, so it's, it's one hundred percent sanctioned by law and so forth. But their, their, their programs that they bring forward are significant capital infrastructure improvements that are budget-neutral or budget-positive. So um generally, a very low-interest debt service is provided, but the additional revenue that they're able to provide through the enhancements uh more than cover that. Then the other uh alternative which we're, we're looking into as well is something called Infrastructure as a Service. Um Infrastructure as a Service is a relatively new um program where uh corporations come in and they provide the cash, they provide the capital outlay for, um for example, the building of a waste uh transfer station. And the city pays nothing until such time as it's done, and then we start to pay a use fee for using the thing that they built. There are terms associated with that. There, it's literally every thirty days. Uh and the, the revenues that are coming in cover that use fee. So there's a lot of ways to consider uh some of those big uh improvements. And the last thing that I'll say that's on your, your note there, we have about eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars left of our America Rescue Plan money. The city utilizes a firm to administer um its America Rescue Plan allotment. That's right now what's left. There's been a tremendous amount of opinions, guidance, and so forth that's been issued since the COVID pandemic started about how that money is to be spent. And basically, every opinion, I mean, it started out super restrictive, and then it got a little looser, and a little looser, and a little looser, and a little looser. And right now, it's super loose, uh to the point where essentially, if an expense is, that, well, first of all, there used to be a requirement that you show, you, because of COVID, you've, you've uh reduced revenue by X amount. You had to, you had to show that, and then you could cover expenses that were within that amount. You don't have to do that anymore. That's now an assumption that you've lost that revenue, uh and you can use it for basically any expense to keep the city ongoing. So um here in City Hall and the Police Department, for example, the Ethernet infrastructure that services everybody's computer, their phones, um causes our dispatch center, for example, to lose connectivity uh about a couple of times an hour to actually keep a log of it. It's very, very disturbing. Um that infrastructure needs to be fixed. We can use our America Rescue Plan money for that. Um so I'm very, very strongly proposing that we divert America Rescue Plan money away from the Telford Avenue project, use Hotel Lotte for that, um because it gets people to our city center, which we absolutely can do, and accomplish some of these projects that have been deferred that we need with this remaining eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Obviously, that doesn't mean impact next year's fiscal, uh next year's budget. So a lot of, a lot of variables up in the air, but some, still some positive news on how to get some stuff like that done. We've obviously got the trash trucks ordered, so that was a big expense uh that's there. But uh yes, I, we are gonna be able to support our departments uh and, and still provide our basic old services, but my philosophy, and, and this is up to council whether or not you should take it, but if you don't have people, it doesn't matter much else. You gotta secure your folks.
And you said the eight seventy-five will cover what you have proposed?
Uh what I have proposed in terms of like the city infrastructure, yes, oh yes, and then some-
Okay. Thank you on behalf of council for the presentation and the information. I know we're kind of, or I am a little, little blown away, but at least we've got some stuff to look at for going forward. Can you give us an update on department head budgets and things as far as are they coming along? They gonna be ready for that special meeting in August?
A- absolutely. So the, the next special meeting that we have, um which is August seventh, uh August seventh, that will be a relatively short meeting. That's, that's a kind of a formality meeting where we have to um uh provide uh part of the proposed tax rate uh or the proposed uh budget to you. Uh we will have some even more details uh than at a department level to present. Uh so I am excited about that, and then more meetings certainly to, to come. We, we do still have some time uh to get the budget together, but this, in my opinion, was the most important stuff to bring to you tonight. And i- if the coun, while, while I'm not recommending any action, i- if the council is clear or, or there is direction that you all want to provide, not in the form of taking action or, or even you could, uh on any of the priorities that I've laid out, please let me know. Uh i- if there's a, a different direction that you want me to go down, that, uh otherwise, this is kind of what I'm, what I'm at least preliminarily planning.
What time?
Five thirty.
Five thirty?
Should we have any other announcements from the council or?
On the cabling, I do have, uh, a little bit, if you want me to speak on that, but the, the important side of it, uh, is warm.
I think the lapse of, in the service speaks for itself. And it's probably, how many years old?
From the way it looks.
So the server was, was put in four years ago, and it was not a new server when it was put in.
How many years ago? Four? Any further announcements?
I'd like to say thank you, appreciate, um, the work that's gone into this to everyone, and, um, it's opened our eye, it's opened my eyes.
Rita, you've done a lot since you got back on vacation, thank you. Appreciate it.
There is a worn path between her office and mine.
Diana, did you have any TML announcements or anything?
I still haven't registered anybody, but I will, I promise I will. And I did give Karina and Rodney your public info, and your-
I did, I already did, we passed it in.
Okay. And, uh, the cybersecurity train, please have it done.
I will get mine done this weekend, I keep forgetting it.
I do have a TML announcement, y'all, y'all left me in charge in the room too long Friday night, and-
Oh, no.
I volunteered Kermit, the city of Kermit, to, uh, host the Region Four TML meeting. It'll probably be in November, since the state meeting is in October. I thought it'd be a great way to show off our new civic center and some of the other positive things we have going on. So they'll be reaching out to Diana to firm up a date, by then, we'll, or when we get that date. Excuse me, we'll try and form a committee, uh, come together with a theme and a meal, and those kind of things. They'll provide the speakers, I think, but anyway, don't leave me in a room of, I'll tell you.
I know, he-
I'm excited, though, y'all, I think it's gonna be a great way to showcase Kermit a little bit.
He asked for vol- they asked for-
Every time we would dodge it.
Yeah, well, you know, they asked for volunteers, and he just stood right up.
I thought it was for an extra meal, I didn't realize it was for something else. I thought it was for something special, so, uh, we'll have one item left on the agenda.
May I make a motion, will you turn?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second for adjournment, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? He is adjourned at seven oh two P M.
There you go.
August fifth, or seventh, bring a friend.
That's right. That's worse.
We might have a watermelon feed or something.